Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Georgia Hamilton. This public hearing held by the Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board is called to order and is being held pursuant to CAO or S. Chapter 77 in District Regulations. Notice of this hearing has been published pursuant to state law. This public hearing is being offered via video teleconference due to COVID-19 outbreak. This hearing is being recorded. If you would like to make an oral comment, hearing person, please fill out the speaker card, which is over here on the paper. Instructions on making oral comments via video teleconference have been included as part of materials posted on the District's website for this public hearing. As a brief reminder, please raise your hand via video teleconference by clicking on the raised hand button, that's due to the name on the participants list, over our pressing star three, if joining by phone, then you will be called on. If you are here in the library, press your microphone when your name is called. All comments must be presented today. Comments should be concise. All comments will become part of the hearing record. You will be allowed three minutes to speak. You will be prompted as your time begins to expire. The written comment period is open until September 14th, and comments of any length have been submitted until that date and will be included in the record. Substantive comments submitted today in the chat will also be included in the record as written comments. The hearing is being held for the construction permit for Clarient West Plant, located at 1227 South Close Street. The purpose of this hearing today is to reflect written and oral comments for the District's consideration before making a final decision on the construction permit for Clarient. After this hearing, if you have given an address when signing in, you will be notified by email of the District's Permit Decision and available to the District's document. This document will also be posted on the District's website under Proposed Actions and available upon request. All public hearings are conducted in an orderly manner and will be recessed if members on the audience are disruptive. Proceeding today are being recorded in accordance with District Regulation 2.07. If there is at any time no comments being taken, the hearing may be paused to allow others to join the hearing. Matt King will provide the brief descriptions of the District's permitting program. Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Good evening. My name is Matt King. I'm the Industrial Permitting Manager for the Louisville Air Pollution Control District. I'm going to provide a brief description about the District's permitting program and how public comments are considered in making final permit decisions. The Clarient West facility is a Title V source. The Title V permits for certain sources, including all... Title V permits are required for certain sources, including all potentially major sources, and as covered by Title V of the Clean Air Act amendments of 1990. The Title V permit brings together all of the applicable federal, state, and local requirements into one permit for the entire plant. US EPA has given the District authority to implement the Title V permit program in Louisville. The Title V permit program is covered through APCD Regulation 2.16. Although this facility has accepted enforceable limits below the major source threshold, it is required to have a Title V permit as it is subject to 40 CFR Part 63, Subpart BB, 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 National Emission Standards of Hazardous Air Pollutants for Chemical Manufacturing Area Sources. Public notice and opportunity for hearing are required for construction permits at Title V sources. This construction permit, the subject of the hearing this evening, will serve as the basis for revisions to the Title V operating permit. Therefore, the permit contains all monitoring, record-keeping, and reporting requirements in addition to all applicable standards. The District is required to consider public comment as part of its permitting decisions. Comments from the public that can be incorporated into the permit decisions are welcome. Relevant comments may include specific statements about the permit application in the proposed permit or information indicating that the operation of the facility poses a threat to human health or the environment, that raises issues with the District's review process or procedures, or expresses concerns that the issuance of the permit what's called by... would cause violations of the District's regulation law or the Clean Air Act. Issues that are beyond the scope of the District permitting's authorities, such as property values, zoning issues, or other issues that are the responsibility of other governmental bodies, not the District, are not considered in making final permit decisions. After the hearing and public comment period are complete, the District will review all comments. The District may make changes to the permit. Once a final determination is made, the permit in response to comments document will be posted on the District website, and anyone who has signed up and provided contact information tonight will receive a copy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Karen Thorne will provide a brief description of the proposed construction permit for Clarient. Ms. Thorne?
I am pulling up Ms. Thorne's presentation right now. While I am doing that, I wanted to note, we are having some internet troubles in the room here, so speakers may not be heard, but we will have all speakers in the room. All of you guys will be seen virtually as well when you are speaking. Right now, you might not be able to see all of us speaking.
The microphones are working.
The mics seem to be working. I checked with somebody out of the room. They can hear you.
My name is Karen Thorne. I'm one of the industrial permitting supervisors here at the District. So I'm going to walk through the construction, the draft construction permit. So the first part of the permit covers the specialty extrusion manufacturing or emission unit W-25. So for this unit, Clarient proposed to add a material handling system to replace the need for manual dumping at the facility. It includes the equipment listed on the screen. This equipment actually, or this slide actually, is included in the handout, if you all saw when you walked in, so you can refer back. Secondly, Clarient proposed to add three hoppers and three conveyors to replace old models. And lastly, they proposed to make a product change at an existing heat treater, resulting in an increase in emissions of volatile organic compounds, or VOCs, and nitric acid. These are the potential emissions for the construction permit. Like I said, these are included in the handout, but there's also a link in the chat to this material. This is an aerial view of the Clarient facility, and you can see the specialty extrusion plant highlighted at the top of the screen on the corner of Oak Street and South 12th. For the Hoody Plant Emission Unit W-55, Clarient proposed to add two feeders to replace old models. They also proposed a new control strategy for the equipment listed on the screen. This increased the plant-wide risk due to hexavalent chromium, or chromium VI, from 1.3 to 1.4, which is within the acceptable risk of 7.5 in a million. Again, these are the potential emissions for the project, and these are located in the handout. Again, the plant location, you can see the Hoody building is in the bottom of your screen at the corner of St. Louis Avenue and South 13th Street. Okay, so this is a diagram of the proposed new control strategy. So if you can see on the diagram, the blue lines are the... or the blue arrows are the existing path for the equipment, and the red line is the new proposed path. So if you can see the top piece of equipment, HT 801, that is a heat treater, it will now have the option to go to the right side of the diagram, which gives it five control devices instead of four control devices on the left side of the diagram. For HT 801B, which is the piece of equipment at the bottom of the screen, the new control strategy will give it the option to go to the left side of the diagram, which gives it four control devices instead of five control devices. The draft permit will not allow the heat treaters to emit out of their new control schemes simultaneously when they're processing chromium products. So that means the equipment going to the red lines on the screen. This is a chart of the plant-wide risk at Clarient West Plant. You can see from the table that their plant-wide risk is increasing from 1.3 to 1.41 in a Here's an illustration of Clarient's plant-wide risk since 2014. I've plotted some points there of when they have submitted an environmental acceptability determination to us, and you can see that it's always within the goal, the plant-wide goal, of 7.5 in 1 million, which is the blue line at the top of the screen. To compare Louisville to the United States in developing federal air toxics regulation, the EPA uses a risk level of 100 in a million to help the agency determine whether facilities need to reduce emissions. So you'll see plotted on this screen, the red line is Clarient's risk, the blue line is the Louisville APCD's goal of 7.5, and the green line at the top of the screen is EPA's targeted risk level. This is a slide of Clarient's actual emissions for the West Plant over the past nine years. This is what we report to EPA's National Emission Inventory. So in the first chart at the top, that's PM-10 emissions, and you can see they are in compliance with their 100 ton per year plant-wide limit for PM-10. The bottom chart has chromium VI emissions plotted and total hazardous air pollutant, or HAP, emissions. Chromium VI is the green line at the bottom. It kind of looks flat because it's squished onto the screen, but there are actually emissions there, but it's in compliance with the 10 ton per year single hazardous air pollutant limit. Their total HAP emissions are represented by the red line, and that is in compliance with the 25 ton per year limit on hazardous air pollutants plant-wide. Thank you.
Ms. Thorne? Would a representative of Clarient like to make a statement? Please tell us your name and topic when we begin speaking.
I'm Mark Swann. I'm the introduction manager for the Calis Park Facility of Clarient. I'm going to take a moment to thank the everybody who opposed the original permit, a course of our company, and all of being responsible corporate citizens, for the involvement in environmental performance at 41,000,000. As such, we take any concern very seriously. I want to thank everyone present for the value of the... And you are both APCD on this and a future company on the page. With your all concerns, questions are given throughout the... Thank you.
So we're going to move to the public comment period of the meeting, and since it's our first hybrid meeting, if you will, I'm going to defer to Matt King to do the explanation of how this will be done.
Try to do this as fairly as possible. We'll ask for your patience. We're going to start in the room, but we'll alternate an in-person comment with someone signed in virtually. Try to balance those things out, keep it moving, get sure... make sure everybody gets a chance to make their comments.
And I would add, if anybody in the room decides to make a comment, you can roll to the table over here, by right here left, to fill out a comment request card.
Steven Peterson?
Steven Peterson from a resident of the Limerick neighborhood within the one mile radius that was described in WFL news article that was made right. I've got some concerns about eight years ago. Yes, all three of them. Fantastic worker citizen. About six of them. A person who had... There is a... That's... The... See, there. Yes, the... Yes. It's all... I think the... It's... So... So... But we... He got... She wanted to replace older equipment. That's gotta be the most vague statement I've heard. That could supply things to replace the old plate. That seems like it needs a little more planning now. I'd say also the piping to allow operation through multiple control chains, and that was described somewhat, and I have some concerns about the fact that we're losing control chain... control chain on one of the HTs. With HT, the trace or process, if you looked at the before and after risk levels, HT was the one driving the number. And so we're losing control on HT. And so with their history best of wet league in this document, which is unfortunate, it would be nice just to have a small schedule of their history of violations, I just have concern that this is a bit broad, maybe if you look at separately. And I would encourage Clarient greatly to live up to what they said eight years ago, to be a good citizen of the neighborhood. I realize I did give up $175,000 grant to a second grade science class, but I think for what they're proposing and what they do in this community, it would better, and I would hope the board would adopt stronger regulations, because it's up to your regulations, is what this says, and you have to give them their permit because they pay, because they're bound to be in compliance. If you're the board, if you're acting, go make the regulations. Maybe you ought to reexamine the regulations. I'll just leave it at that. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
We're having some trouble, the people within the virtual meeting, there's not a problem hearing speakers, so everybody make sure you speak up as much as possible. I'm going to move the mic a little bit closer. The camera right there is what's capturing the audio, just so everybody's aware. Speak up as much as you can. And if you have a written version of your statements, we'd appreciate you sharing that with us at air@louisvilleky.gov, just to make sure we have it as accurately as possible for the record. Okay. And...
They're right here. What?
The timer is sitting over there. If you're wondering how much time you have left, he will be holding up signs, letting you know when you're down to one minute left. And if you run over that, feel free to submit written comments, as Vice Chair Sullivan said, of any length.
How much time do you have?
Three minutes. We still have no virtual hands raised, Karen, so...
Martin Carter?
A couple of questions that I wanted to comment. My question is, you mentioned the cancer risk, how about the... Like asthma and C O P D and that kind of thing. Sure, well, around the death rate, the... I'm sorry, the life expectancy in the West End is about 10 years less than in the East End, and any increment making this... We should be aiming at making it better, even if it's just a tiny amount, and I congratulate you for having such a low... incidence. Well, congratulations for having a low... amount of pollution, but there are... I want you to look down, not up.
We have one raised hand virtually, so we'll switch to that. Heather, I will make you a panelist if you are able to turn on your video. We appreciate it. Otherwise, you're free to unmute yourself and begin speaking now. Heather, if you're speaking, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me? I think I have my mic on, but I can't get my video on right now. Is that okay?
We can hear you now. Go ahead.
Okay, perfect. So I'll keep this short and sweet, because I second what the people prior to me who spoke said, but with so many technological advances in the world, there's no reason that emissions and monitoring should go down versus... or should... that emissions should go up and monitoring should go down. I mean, we should always be on a downward trend when we're talking about people's lives, especially in neighborhoods that have been so marginalized and so traumatized and subject to so many abuses. On top of that, I would really like to see the company, Clarient, put forth more donations into the community, more things that will positively benefit the neighborhood, instead of focusing on constantly taking. And I'll stop there.
Is that working? Good. Not much to say other than what's been said already. I do have some difficulty with the... with the monitoring that's going on. It sounds like a lot depending on Clarient to... Clarient, sorry, to monitor themselves in this whole process. And as been mentioned in the handout here, they've had a history of, like, noncompliance, and I would like to see some way that people outside of Clarient, I understand the board does somewhat agree here, but with the company with that kind of history, I'm sorry, I don't trust them. And I also agree that we need to be moving down. I think we'd wait the engineering board here right now. Engineers can make this smaller if they want to. I think that's just a question.
We have no additional raised hands virtually right now. I did want to add, I was asked, anybody who just has a first name logged in, if you would provide your last name too when speaking for the record. And Heather, if you would mind sending a chat with your last name so that we can properly put you in the response to comment document, it would be appreciated. But next in person, Karen.
Ebony Cochrane?
My name is Ebony Cochrane. I live in the Chickasaw neighborhood, and I'm here in support of residents living in Park Hill, California neighborhood, and me just being in that area. First of all, I want to say that the information that was presented to us is somewhat misleading. There should be... saying that there is any kind of acceptable risk for hexavalent chromium is very misleading. So hexavalent chromium is a carcinogen and an antigen, a mutagen, reproductive and developmental toxicant in a skin sensitive condition. It's not the only chemical that Clarient emits that is associated with a lot of those same things. So we're not just talking about this company emitting one chemical that is associated with these ailments. We're talking about a company that is emitting chemicals, multiple chemicals that cause these patients. And what about our safety? Can we trust that Clarient will maintain the equipment where hexavalent chromium is released? Recently, Clarient was fined for modifying equipment without a permit, failing to operate control devices over several months, failing to inspect some of their equipment throughout 2021 in exceeding hourly limits on particulate matter from September to December of 2020. How can we trust this company to oversee the proper maintenance of equipment that releases such toxic chemicals into our neighborhoods? Since our most... since the most recent violations, has APCD increased frequency of onsite inspections to make sure corrective action has been taken? Does the APCD conduct onsite inspections of companies who have committed violations that have put our families in jeopardy? Clarient has placed neighborhoods in danger in multiple ways, and they have the nerve to ask for changes with potential increases in emissions? Why would you approve any permits when past behavior has not been up to par? Now, according to W FPL article, it says that regulators say they cannot use this violations history to prevent the issuance of a permit, because the business continues to pay its fines and remedy violations. So what we want is, we want proof that you are unable to deny this permit, or that you are unable to create new regulation that would enable you to deny this permit. Mike, Matt King, you and I were on an EPA webinar where you mentioned, after I asked how many of these permits are usually denied, what percentage? And you said, as long as you've been with APCD, and correct me if I'm wrong, none of them have ever been denied, but there may have been modifications made to permits. And so that's unacceptable, that we have a regulatory agency that is, in my opinion, taking the easy way out and not trying to figure out how to make our neighborhoods safer. We want to know if you had the chemical facility come up with safer alternatives that could be used as catalysts? There are other chemicals that we use as catalysts. And we want to know what in the law states that you must approve this proposed permit as long as they pay fines and remedy violations? We care about people, not poisons. And Clarient, the cost of doing business is for you to find somebody smart enough in this country, in this entire globe, we're a global society. You guys need to stop being lazy and find people to create technology. You know, you're giving money to these schools. What you need to be doing is picking some of those children and training them in technology that will help us be a healthier society. This laziness and this self-reporting and accepting that is, we're not going for it anymore. So you guys need to check yourself. And I'm wondering what you guys...
What?
How you guys... What you guys... What goes through your mind when you go home at night, you're like, yeah, that permit was approved. We're going to increase hexavalent chromium while people on the other side of town are suffering. I want you to think about it.
Right to the video?
I would like to say, there's no additional risk of cancer that is acceptable for simply to increase the profit margin of a private company. There's no amount of hexavalent chromium that is safe for human beings to be around, and I deeply, deeply, deeply oppose Matt King's term.
I'm State Representative Adka Scott, and I serve Kentucky House District 41. Thank you to Ebony Neil Cochrane for her leadership and truth telling. Antonio Diaz, who is an environmental justice activist, once said that it's incredible, although not surprising, to see the extent to which corporations continue to devise ways to profit from people's increasing concern for their environment and health. I'm deeply concerned about the health of my neighbors across the mobile, and particularly in the West End where I live. Y'all have probably received hundreds of comments on Clarient's permit application, especially after apparently by this review, W FPL's news report in late July about the revision that Clarient is requesting. You would allow the company to make modifications that slightly increase the cancer risk for the surrounding neighborhood. Slightly isn't too much. Thank you to everyone who has submitted your comments thus far. Please keep them coming. I think you have another week to submit your comments. In the Park Hill neighborhood, about 15,000 people live within one mile of Clarient's facility. I wonder if they got some of that Clarient swag. I just attended church in Park Hill a few weeks ago. It could have walked to the Clarient facility. Here's the thing. You know, two thirds of the people who live in the Park Hill area are black, and at least 68% qualify as low-income. Many of them can't be here today to speak for themselves, so the rest of us are raising our voices on their path. I'm speaking up for the folks who are often treated as expendable, and I want them to know that they have value when they are working. I know APCD cannot respect Clarient's history of having paid $58,000 in fines over the last seven years for nearly a dozen environmental violations against them as you make your decision, because they're still paying some of those fines, but I can certainly remind the public that corporations cannot be allowed to pay their way out of accountability. I know that the risk of cancer might seem miniscule to some people, but...
but it is compounded by repeated violations and fines as a bet in all our logic, how to is some monetary slap on the wrist. We are witnessing blatant environmental racism, and we must acknowledge the historical injustices that have been piqued upon West Louisville. Louisville has some of the worst air quality in Kentucky. Our children are most at risk because of their small, still developing lungs, along with the amount of time they spend outdoors. The pandemic air pollution is one of the many reasons that I fought so hard at Louisville Metro Council to secure dedicated funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund so folks won't be exposed because they have to sleep outside. And it is why I serve on the Natural Resources and Energy Committee in Franklin. I am asking you, Air Pollution Control District, please defy Clarion's request to continue polluting our environment.
Jeremiah Vaughn.
Hi, my name is Jeremiah Zonia. I'm with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. And like all our civic fellows in the millions before me, I have hose, granting, then sort of the ability to put together equipment change and policies that would have been placed. Kind of ridiculous that for $75,000, they believe that they can bribe off these communities and buy the West End of Louisville just to increase cancer rates. Thank you.
Hey, so I'm going to make this pretty sick because I can't say anything any better than the people who are speaking for me tonight. But I've had lived in Louisville for a little over two years now, and this is my home. And the place that I'm from, Eastern Kentucky, I just watched, watched because of this, you know, this like repeated pattern of being taken advantage of. I completely just like Clarion, it's the people. And I just, I don't want to see that happen here. And so I deeply, deeply oppose and have a responsibility to the community.
Deborah Durrenport.
My name is Deborah Durrenport. And I am obviously a patient and also a lifelong resident of Louisville, of the Forum, which is a lot of work. I, like the rest of the folks who have spoken so far, have one exception, obviously, and deeply opposed to the construction or the. There is, as I've said, no acceptable level, not really any safe level of chromium six that should ever be in. This is not something that we can allow to happen. Countless other places in the United States have been strung along and taken advantage of by these corporations and these ghouls who just want higher and higher profits for, you know, for what? You know, for what? And meanwhile, people in these communities are getting lung cancer, right? You know, I, I don't think, I need to remind many of the folks in this audience about the way the harmful effects been of the environmental deposition of petrochemical lead that have happened, right? Who is dead, right? Folks everywhere are being, are found to have acceptably high levels of lead in their system. Right? An entire generation has been poisoned in their minds, right? It's not just about our education system. It is about that. And I, you know, obviously I can't single-handedly stop anything. But I will not just remain silent and watch yet more chemicals, even if it's not lead, right? It doesn't matter. Something that blows up the DNA inside your lungs is not going to be something that is acceptable in the environment anymore so than that. So I think, as I said, that we have, you have a responsibility to this community to block this by any means necessary. I frankly don't care if there isn't something on the books already that would involve you to do that, may yet, it's your job.
Ron Bellerlin.
No. I'm John Bellerlin, Professor of the University of Louisville, winner of this year's alone five major awards for environmental justice. Work nationally. We publish a lot of articles about Louisvilleville, and we call it the sacrifice zones. You know what I mean? Sacrifice zones, 1,000 places, but Louisvilleville is the number one place of sacrifice. 62,000, 443 people have short lives. I want to talk about my late wife, who worked as a school teacher. And she'd tell me about this sort of tell every day that she'd come to a classroom in Cogman at the end of the day, and she said, let's clean this up, get this down here. She increasingly got ill. It's fair. Well, we looked at the toxic release inventory and schools nearby, the, these companies. And the amount of pollution dropped on these people was not one, two, three, or four times. It was 12 times beaten out. Imagine that. 12 garbage cans dumped on a Louisville child's face. And you know what happens when they are near these schools? The inability to do, have math efficiency, 52% can have math efficiency. 52% can. What these sacrifice zones mean. We're not even giving children a chance, really children. And it's so sad. We have other data as well, but I don't have time to submit it. And it's all been worth it, but, oh, I was just about to stop looking for wrap it up. I love that. Let's stop the pollution. We have failed to stop pollution, lung, you know, which was 92% of the chemical poisoning and chemical. And they tried it two years, they spent $3 million and they stopped it. We weren't there to wait. Again, my name is John Bellerlin. Happy to talk to anyone who wants me. Bye bye.
Terry Key. Hey, y'all. My name is Terry. I'm a resident of District 15 in great city of Louisville. So, and as you can tell, I am a member of the South Louisville as well, who unanimously is against what we're trying to do here to our wonderful city, to the wonderful people of this city. So I don't know if something that I taught, right? From this, we must take earlier in that something that is permissible by law is for 25 tons of this poison to be dropped into the air around our children, around our schools, around the people that we know, the people that we love, the people who are our neighbors, our family, our friends. 25 tons is permissible. And we're not even sure that plan is going to be keeping it to work about whether or not, you know, it stays under the legal 25 ton limit. And overall, I have to let you say, like, this is poison that's being put into our, put into our air. This is poison. Y'all can call it volatile chemicals on one, you can call it whichever, you know, lab created, you know, term that you want to call it. But this is poison that's going into our air. Eastern Kentucky was flooded because trash was being poured into their rivers and creeks on a regular basis by horrible, horrible companies, horrible, horrible people. We have the opportunity to prevent that right now. If y'all want the idea of Kentucky, the idea of Louisville for the rest of the world to think of to be absolute trash, poison, horrible conditions, no matter what it is, no matter where you go, then look at yourself in the mirror when you go to sleep at night. You know, when, when you go to sleep, look at yourself. Try to convince yourself that you're an okay person. Because this is 25 kinds of poison in the air that we're trying to let people get away with. And I don't want that to be our Louisville.
Karen.
Arneeta Gadson. Ms. Gadson, I've promoted you. If you're able, turn on your video, but you should be able to also unmute yourself now. If you're speaking, Ms. Gadson, we can't hear you yet. Make sure your microphone's on and you're unmuted. Oh, you just muted yourself.
Is this me?
Now we can hear you, Ms. Gadson. Go ahead.
Okay, the one thing, and I've, I've, I've sit here and I've listened. I cannot hear. It's, it's a lot I missed because a lot of it was garbled. But the one thing I hope we all understand is, is you, everybody's saying two words, regulations and legal. Those are the only two forms that we really have to fight. So if we want to fight, we have to find ways to change the laws on the books, the regulations on the books. We can complain, and yes, we should, no one should be, no one should have to live with emissions higher than what they are now. They should be lower, and that is understood. But until, if we can get together and we can look at the regulations, that's what started them in the first place, was people getting together saying the regulations were not tight enough. So the STAR program was born. Now that we have this, if it is not where it should be, then it's time to get together again and to look at the regulations. That's like driving down the street. You go 70 miles an hour, you're good. If 75 is not good, they changed the regulations to get back to, I mean, change, I'm sorry, changed the law to get back to 70. That's where we have to go with this. And I understand the emotion. Lord knows I understand the emotion. But I just wanted to say that I think that in dealing with something where we can do something about it, which is where we need to go now. We need to go back and look at the regulations and see what can happen, see what we can do with that to change everything. And that's even with EPA.
Thank you, Ms. Gadson.
House Counselor Ismael.
Hello, my name is Ismael. I'm with the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and I'm a student at U of A. I'm going to keep it really short. There is no amount of profit that you can make that is worth more than the single person's life, let alone the city of Louisville and all the people that reside in it. And so, of course, I'm opposing this because you all have the power to change it, and I'm leaving with this. Thank you.
Monica Walker.
Hello, and good day to you. I'm a resident. I'm less than five miles away from Claire. I'm getting in the community because of all the praise that you need. I'm also a president of the county for the National Leadership Council. Several years ago, Claire can ask for a permit or for more admissions. We had a opportunity, and we had it answered every single day. None of our questions were ever answered. We even gathered weather data from the earth, pollution control. We are so silent that they didn't answer your question, but we are still going to allow these permits. You know that poison is fake. You're for profit, but there are people, as they say, children in there. As I said, 30 plus years, there was even a chemical that y'all released at night that woke up like a nervous condition, like some kind of chemical for the army. I don't know. You have kept that in building, then you want to close streets that community rides their life. But you are poisonous for profit. Ain't giving nothing to the community or back to the community. And you want to allow you to continue to kill us. I suffer with allergies. I suffer with asthma. I cannot breathe the sugar in the community that cannot come out because of the thickness of what's in the air. It should be denied and for you to obey this and for you have no respect for the community in which you are and individuals that, that you cannot even ask, answer questions of what you are doing. I think we should be better than that rule, and we should have cleaner air.
Doug H.
Hi, everyone. So people often have been talking about the science behind all of this, which is extremely important. Something that I find very interesting is why? So why is, is the regulatory body, it's become basically a rubber stamp factory? Somebody mentioned that no permits have been tied in, you know, in the determined future or past. What, how does that happen? I mean, how does a huge group of people on one side, members of the community, saying, we don't want this? And a tiny, tiny group of people on the other side, the board members of corporations saying, we do want this. This is going to make us wealthier. And how does the regulatory body, which is tasked with, to, at their only level is the protection of health and well-being, the well-being of the community, help them always side with the corporate body on every, on every issue? So this is not, this is not a question of a regulatory body. This is regulatory capture. So it's interesting to look, it would be very interesting to look into relationships these board members hold with, with corporations who are industrial blues. And, you know, more than anything, there, yeah, there, there, there needs to be, there needs, it doesn't work for common sense. This, this, this board is not in any way protecting anyone's health or, or well-being with, with these permits being accepted all the time.
Doorway.
Well, most of the world is trying to put down on pollution, not increase pollution. And I'm a resident in the neighborhood. I walk the neighborhood. I'm a cancer survivor. And I just can't understand how you expect people to accept this. And me, you know, it's unacceptable.
Uh, anybody else who'd like to make a comment, um, please step forward and provide us your name.
I'm going to echo a lot of what someone over here says. I'm not going to engage in science with it. Uh, I'm Dr. Megan Poole. I'm a professor of science and tech writing at the University of Louisville. And part of what I study is why community concerns and comments are only taken seriously when they're engaging with the bold science and technical jargon when they permit. Why general health concerns aren't enough? Why environmental justice concerns, Ron Raisin's concerns, aren't enough? But that said, I do want to thank you all for having this space tonight. I'm from Lake Charles, Louisiana. These conversations don't happen down in Sherman Parish, in Calhoun Parish. This is a rare, important moment of the democratic process where public gets to come and share their concerns. But you know, the other part of the democratic process is listening to the multitude of voices who express, may, and plead their concerns. See, that's what's here tonight. That listening part, truly being responsive to the community, that's for y'all. That's your board. And how do we do that? How do we make sure we're being responsive to all possible stakeholders? And here I do think of local residents as the majority of the stakeholders affected by the permit. When I teach science and tech writing, I tell my students that they have to answer all of their stakeholders' questions honestly and transparently. The basic questions are who, what, when, where, how, and why. APCD does a spectacular job, and I'm not being sarcastic here. They do a great job of providing information on all of those questions. We might have plenty of concern about that information, but there is no doubt some information provided on all of the questions, except one really. Why? And that's the one I hear over and over and over from students every semester. Why? Why does Claire have want and need this new equipment? Why is the permit being filed now? Why is the process being done this way and not another? Why don't we know more about a prudent method for getting this work done? The whys are telling because they deal with motives. What the organization is considering and what they're not, or really whom the organization is considering, who they're not. And the client propose any permit that conceals the whys. And to be clear, I believe this one does. And in fact, that APCD begins tonight in prioritizing not just who, what, when, where, and how, but why. Maybe if we started talking about the whys here, then we begin to start counting the conversation that could really make a difference. Thank you.
No other registered comments at the moment?
Somebody coming by.
Sorry.
Somebody hasn't spoken yet behind you. Dr. Gilligan?
My name is Lisa Manus, um, and I'm from, um, I was filming Louisville. And, um, I just want to say that, um, when the board approached and I was at Claire's here, um, with a disruption permit that increases production, then Claire and corporate should bring more to the table, um, by reducing the, the overall, um, uh, risk. Um, so if they had brought this and then also brought something that retired a dirtier process or upgrading and visiting the good thing process with increased controls, um, then that could be part of Claire's environmental stewardship mission. Um, and then they could bring the, um, far succeed that.
Other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, um, we got, um, doing a link EPA reports, which are being, it might come from. He wants to struggle too. And we combined the four measures of pollution, put them together. And then we looked at the mid-sized cities of Louisville, there's 32 other cities. Number two in terms of worrying pollution going out there. That's what really, really excites me. And that's why, you know, when people talk about pollution in the air and so on, that's crazy. We need, and if you read, people keep on talking about profits. What about the profits and sustainability and success of human beings? Our housing in the West Side, which I worked on, you know, 550 years built, um, being destroyed. We have 5,000 abandoned units. People don't want them to die. And we cleaned it up with good regulation. Homeowners would find good office and equity, which is really important, uh, division between black and white. Children were run better, much better. We raised schools with school workers. And, um, pollution does crazy things to your brain. It really does. And there's a lot of data out there. Now, even umpires in bad cities, in Hollywood cities, they had worse judgments on strikes and balls and in clean cities. So you're just not thinking logically. So I wanted just to add that in there. You know, and let someone else talk to you about it because, uh, I'm also wondering, where is the, um, center for healthy air cleaning and soil? Why don't they speak it out? Otherwise it took us a while.
Will you stick your name if you have a lot of cards, please?
Hello, my name is Rodney Harrington. And, uh, I'm going to make my point very quickly to the point. We pride ourselves for being a compassionate city. And part of this coming is to the APCD in terms of that's the model for the city, that's everything that's rolled out by this, you know, the state administration. That's one of the things that I just hope that you all take into consideration. We talk about being a compassionate city. But where is the compassion when we're looking at things like this with companies trying to continue to dunk on areas that are already dealing with a lot? Not just the pollution, but there's several things. I'm a social worker and I work in the West End. That's my office. That's my changes. And I see what it looks like from every angle when people are struggling with breathing. And, you know, of course, we got, we got the slum overs. We got all these things happening and nobody cares. And so I just hope, you know, that from, you know, working for the city and we pay taxes, you know, that there's a certain level of advocacy and responsibility that you all have, not just the clearing, but also the crap we have from Rattletale. You know, it's not fair when you have communities that's fenced in between all these places that is not getting the proper respect and service and without that, that insult the injury, no one is really is coming back. Yes, we made a sponsor of a football game here and some little ranch chicken from Dean on there. And everything like, it really did something spectacular. But you did not do anything spectacular. And we're looking at help out them and maybe peep the upon him. I thought while traveling, when I worked at the health department and we went through and did those community health screening, look at that data. The data is there. It's dated, but it's there. Let's follow up those people who were coming to those community health screening in 2007, knew where the pollution was coming from. And that of those people came from all of the difficult in West Mobile. And we did cancer screens and we checked for F. So the data is there, is all there. And I just, you know, hope that you all really do the job, because that's what you're here for. You know, we can't let these companies dictate and run our city. So we're really compassionate. Let's really practice being compassionate and not being, you know, looking from a capitalistic angle. We have a lot of issues in this city. I'm not going to go into that ten, but we have a lot of issues. But pollution is a huge issue. You have a community that has 10 years less life expectancy on top of the other projects we got going on, the other parts of the management. What we want to use to get on the road is too much. So just take that into consideration. Are you really being compassionate? Or is that just some crap you want to put on a T-shirt with 15 different ways to say, oh, it's bad, but it's good. Let's do it.
25 tons of poison for profit. It is really something that needs to be examined and the role of this board in work stamping that is all a part of this psychology, this psychopathology of white.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Please put your name.
My name is Mary Schroeder. And I just want to make one brief comment. A few blocks from here, there is a parking lot that was caged over, I don't know, thick but thick. It had been part of an industrial complex of some sort. I am told that nothing can be done with that parking lot. Not so much as planting a tree because operating that covering on that parking lot would lose poisons. So there is a light, which I have seen. I wondered how many others there are in this neighborhood, in this city.
Any other registered to make a comment?
No raised hands virtually. Karen, any other cards come in?
So if there's no other comments at the moment, we'll take a 10-minute recess. We convene at 7:15. Right on with that. Farming. If anybody new joins, uh, we will then take off.
The hearing is open from 6 until 8 PM. So we'll remain here until 8 PM in case anybody else wishes to make a comment.
Usually the board can ask questions of folks who have spoken. Are you planning to do that this evening?
The purpose of tonight's hearing is to take comment. So, right. And for those folks here who've already spoken, again, that public comment period to receive oral comments is open until September the 14th. So we invite you to also share additional thoughts that you may have with us in writing. At the end of this process, we'll prepare a response to comment document for all the comments that we've received tonight. If you've registered with us and we have your contact information, we will provide a copy to you. If not, it will be posted on our recent actions page and made available there. So thank you.
And anybody wishing to make a comment, I'm sharing the screen virtually as well. If you go to LouisvilleKY.gov/APCD, this is the screen you'll see. On the left-hand side, if you go to proposed actions, you can click this bright blue button right here to submit a comment and submit a comment. You can also email airpermits@LouisvilleKY.gov, or if you don't remember that, just air@LouisvilleKY.gov and we'll be sure it gets to the right place.
So we'll reconvene in 10 minutes. For those who've already made comment, any additional comments you would like to make, we request those be in writing. At this time, we'll ask if any, uh, folks that have not commented who wish to do so. Likewise, any folks on, uh, the video teleconference or by phone.
We have no raised hands virtually.
Okay. And again, we will, this hearing will be open till eight o'clock. We'll stay in, in session for that bit of time.
Amir Rangar.
Good evening. My name is Amir Rangar. I'm a resident of Chickasaw neighborhood. Um, at first I wasn't going to say anything because I felt like I wanted to hear what else to share. But a lot of the speakers reminded me of something that I've been to hearings like this, Rattletale, there were some companies in the Chickasaw area that wanted to get advanced permissions on things that we do are bad, controls that we know are poison. And some of the people here this evening, I've seen this several times, that they hear people say that there are lots, maybe all the times, the companies get approved and the people are never supported. That has compelled me to speak. So I'm very frustrated. There's only like one person that I don't recognize that, that I will speak here tonight, maybe because you represent the West. But, ma'am, I see your voice. You're a very pleasant voice. But that should make me still be compassionate and brave towards and make sure that people are not wrong. Again, this is the opportunity. I remember your voice. I remember you speaking in a very quaint way, but this is not a quaint way issue. Sir, thank you for you, seeing you at the insulting desk for the meeting. It's very disappointing to hear that so many communities are getting the same treatment. And not just on the pollution level, but on so many other problems levels in the city. Let's not give the last time that you let that happen. Ma'am, thank you for you. I've seen you several times in these meetings before. Quick conversation, great community, I would like to see you in the room. But we've been encouraged, I was encouraged to use the small city app because that was cool. And frequently I would do it. So on the expressway when I came home from work, I would pull over on my expressway to make sure that the location painted in the proper place. And time and time again, I would get a response back and nothing was found. Now, my issue was, it was a pattern. It was late at night, it was after the rain, or it was very early in the morning. Now, maybe we would all hypothesize things are doing a certain pattern of releasing chemicals or fumes sometimes in the day. But for whatever reason, that app never came to show anything was wrong. Never. They're going to respond, wow, they have too many emails. Take us home. 40 minutes. But I find it funny. But my idea, if you have the app, you encourage constituents to use it, then what are you going to do about it? We need to do something. Somebody needs to go out at 8 o'clock at night, at 10 o'clock at night, at 4 o'clock in the morning, at 7:00 in the morning, when kids are going to school. And there was one particular instance, with all this in mind, we have filter students in high school, so schools start early. Students are turning around on the expressway, to 264, around the west, 264, 8:00 so in the morning. So, you know, that's an early enough time for the divisions to clear up by the time everyone gets to work. But those students who don't live in that area were like, whoa, because the air was thick with the pollution that some of us breathe all the time. And then you know what? Put it on the app. Nothing's found. So then, um, we talked about the funding, the extra money going towards a sensor that So when, we talk about the funding, the extra money going towards a sensor that can detect that? What's that into action? Appreciate you saying stop, but this is always, I hope you can prepare me to take what you want to say. When you have people from all over the community saying that this is not okay, some will go up here from the company, bless you all, who did that. But the reality is, you have to stop rubber stamping these problematic measures when anybody asks you for whatever price it is. If you have no practice at all, we do. And we need you to stop calling and do the right thing. And if you don't know what that is, we'll let you know what that is. Please don't tell us that you do the app and you don't do anything. Now, stone faces looking at us, just letting us talk. We are sick of it. I'm sick of it. And tonight, I, so here, Mr. King, I believe you got me stoned, but I need, I don't see some tears, honestly, coming down your cheeks because you're feeling what the people are saying. How many people have come forward and said, "This is about today," time and time again? Or you all are taking a stand and actually show that you have some moral standing about yourself. Today is September eighth. Let this be the day.
I'll let you know if anybody raises their hand.
I know that this isn't a desire situation, but I was just curious as to why the justice county attorney office is here? Do they, are you part of, are you on the board?
I'm not on the board. The county attorney's office represents, that's a legal advisor, whole one there, most of the district.
Anybody who's speaking, again, just make sure you note your name again, so we can make sure we keep track who's speaking.
And again, we would like you to really just make a written comment, a statement, including.
I'd like to be careful now, my pleasure. Yeah, no one's talking.
I don't even mind me something, because part of what I want to say is, when I was up here, I was very angry. You know, these issues having seemed more standard of this. And I know that you guys faced a lot of bitter old enough. And despite my personal feelings towards it, do sympathize enough that it's very hard for anyone in this. What I will say is, do not let yourself, do not let your mind be haunted that people here are experiencing a lot of anger. Don't just say they're being irrational, they're angry, they don't know what they're talking about. Because, yeah, I mean, I'm sure some of us have said something at some point, but that doesn't take away from the fact that all the people here are excited. The issue of, like, people who have been through, to mistrust, they want to increase, um, to increase. And people here, they want, they say, they need help, they need such, any, they need help. And you have, you have, you just, all of them, they have to talk some. Then that's all it is.
Steven Peterson. I was the first speaker of the evening. I live in the Limerick neighborhood, fourteen hundred yards from Clarion. Just looking over this, I was on Clarion's website about an hour ago. And this is at the bottom of what they consider to be sustainable practices. It says, "We want to enable a sustainable future in every way they, we would add value to sustainable innovation." Really, to me, that just sounds like broke, which is what your professors want to hear. And then this is the article, I just want to mention it because it quotes two leaders at Clarion. This is the article that they promoted when they gave the seventy-five thousand dollars to the community center. This is a quote, "Clarion is committed to being a good corporate citizen. We add value to communities, we enhance opportunity, and we support initiatives that will increase well-being." That Dr. Deepak, my butchered his name, regional head of Clarion in North America. Stefan Bresch, head of business catalysts in North America added, "We want to help develop a foundation for the community. We would offer support to the community. We have facilities nearby. We look forward to seeing these young people flourish." But this is the opposite of that. So I just wanted that to be on the record, that it seems like there's public statements on their own website contradict that they're currently proposing for the community.
I think it's very telling that, like, my name is Grant Hill, and I live literally a mile from the plant on Hill Street. I think it's very telling that multiple different community relationships and organizations are leveraged to come out against this. Clarion couldn't be bothered to have a single person other than their, like, paid staff member come and speak in favor of this. I've been at different public, different environmental public, um, common hearings over the course of my life, political development, the last, like, thirteen years. When a company is afraid that the regulation will be enforced, they make an effort to bring people out to speak against it. I've been at, um, I've been at street buffer hearings in Pithole where every major service major, service line corporation busts in miners between ships into, uh, you know, a gymnasium with ten thousand miners in it. The fact that the corporation is so confident that you all will decide the way they, the way that they want to, which, I mean, frankly, they should be, right? Like, y'all have never, ever denied them a permit ever, is deeply telling and deeply disturbing.
My name is Tiffany Cochran. I just want to mention the schools that are within one mile of Clarion, which are Weekly Elementary, Cochran Elementary, McFerrin Preparatory Academy, and then one I've not turned over, which is Western Day Treatment. But just to keep in mind that we have young bodies that are being exposed to these chemicals. And I, and one more thing about the misleading graphs and charts and things like that. A red line was mentioned where Clarion's line was red, it was all the way at the bottom, which was below, I guess, A B C D threshold, which was below EPA's threshold. And we, it looks like, when I looked at that, I was like, why am I here in Clarion, you know, well within the threshold? But again, we have to remind ourselves, they don't always operate in that way, number one, because they have several violations. They self-report, so I don't know, you know, if there are frequent onsite inspections. And then, um, geez, I lost that person. We call that the rubber down, by the way, if you lose your thought. But anyway, so many different, oh, the third thing is that there's no acceptable rhythm. That's the third thing. And so we have our babies in these schools who are trying to learn. And many times, the parents get blamed because they're not reading to their children at home. But, you know, how can you read to a child who's had an asthma attack because, you know, something in the area just isn't right? We talk about the economics of these companies. You know, they can't afford to put in this, they can't afford to understand new or create new technology. But what about the household economics? What about the parent who has to leave their job and he doesn't get paid because they have to pick up a sick child whose future earnings are compromised because they're sick all many days of the week because of these chemical facilities? And so we need to start thinking about the economics of households. And then, I mean, if that doesn't move in, think about Medicaid, Medicare, those costs that some of, some of the illnesses could be attributable to some of these customized chemical facilities. And so another thing, you know, someone mentioned earlier about, you know, we all, a lot of you guys are getting emotional and it's about the law. Listen, we are in the state we are in because there was no emotion and no compassion coupled with logical thoughts. When a lot of these laws were either made or things are missing from the law. So if you are the type of person who does not couple compassion, emotion, thoughtfulness, love of community, respect for human bodies in your decisions that you make with regards to regulations, that is the problem.
Hey, y'all, this is Carrie again. I'll go with you. You done? All right, thank you. So I'm just going to go ahead and say that I'm glad that we do have our legal representation for ACDV here today. Because I wanted to be reminded of something, you know, of something that's called a conflict of interest, right? So as officials, either appointed or elected into office, whichever office in the day that you hold within this great city, you are appointed there or elected there for the express concern of holding the will and the rights of the people who got you there. Okay, so at the end of the day, regardless of how much money, you know, Clarion, who's five hundred thousand dollars, is fine debt. Not even, you know, operation debt, not even management debt, not even, no, they're in debt for funds that they have had of put on them by EPA, other missions, other organizations. Five hundred thousand dollars worth of fines. It's a part of the conflict of interest to the people of this city. Because if you think about it one more time, we're going to bring back that number of twenty-five tons. Twenty-five tons of poison that they're allowed legally by the federal government to put into our neighborhood, into our air, into the ground and the soil that we plant, that we try to cover up, the poison that we try to cover up, as we said before, with layers and layers and layers of tar. Because that's the only thing that you can come between our house and the line there up. Like, I'm laughing because I don't think y'all understand how ridiculous it is that we have to sit here and come to you and fight and bravo and beg and hope and plead that maybe, maybe y'all will act in your own interest, which is the interest of the people.
I think it's appropriate that we take another recess until ten, till eight. So we'll begin recess. So to close, beginning with the hearing, we're going to go for five more minutes of public comment. Clarion has, right, and maybe, I suppose, they're so desirable, there's nothing to that. So, any other comments from folks in the audience or by teleconference or phone?
No virtual hands, one.
Can you please state your name?
Yes, Steven Peterson, of Limerick neighborhood. Sorry to come in that three times, but I've heard, just during that break, so I've had the opportunity to hear from people off the online side of there. And they can't hear anything, so I would almost just maybe raise the question to the county attorney representative that, I don't know if I have it for it. Met this public, might just be work analyzing when you guys get back to the office. Maybe there's a need for another meeting until folks who maybe don't have a caller, don't only have the opportunity to join the line that are here and had subjective involvement. Just want to make that comment.
Thank you for showing. For folks who are here and who may be able to hear us, and those who can't, we will make sure that on our website, the information for giving us an oral comment, I'm sorry, a written comment, is clear. Because the written comment period extends until September fourteenth. There is a woo-foo form on our proposed page to make it easier for folks to share that comment. You can send us an email to airpermit or air@LouisvilleKY.gov and we'll get that to the right people for consideration as part of this. So thank you.
First question. Will the audio and video from this meeting?
It's being recorded.
Yeah, I believe so. If it's not a good, we'll still post it if it's not of good quality, but I do apologize for that, or hopeless to include folks who couldn't make it. Doesn't sound like we were able to do that, so we'll review that and see what we can do. That's something that we should have been able to handle a little better. We'll put the information out there. Again, you can comment in writing and we'll determine if those folks that couldn't attend need to be given an opportunity to attend.
My name is Deborah Bellamy. I want to add on to what the gentleman's comment was from Limerick earlier. Yeah, if you're not able to hear from the digital option, in the state of Kentucky, we have very clear, open record, open meeting law. And if they're not able to hear or actively participate in this, that is a violation of the law and that needs to be amended. I encourage folks to follow up with that, with our state, with our state officials. Because if people aren't able to... because if people aren't able to participate in a public meeting, that is not only a problem, but that violates our democracy, that violates transparency. We already know who y'all are really in solidarity with. We already know that your centering needs dollars. We already know that y'all don't care about the risk to children, adults, elderly, any of us. And it's very clear that you have made efforts, efforts to just comply and walk through the motions of this, but then it hasn't been proven. You didn't even make sure that people could participate online. And then not only the major problem, but that shows even greater depth of, of the lack of due diligence, the blatant disregard for not even, not just respect, but for your, what you're supposed to do legally in this state. Especially since COVID, the pandemic's still happening. People need to have the digital access to open and public meetings, as it is articulated in our state law. Shame on you, disgusting. Your comfort will not last. You know that.
Pursuant to Regulation 1.08, Section 2.1.4, would a representative of Clarion like to address the comments presented at today's hearing?
Joshua Ritter, Clarion Corporation. I just want to take the time to thank all the participants here, in the audience, the ones online that can hear me, and also the board, the constituents, all the constituents for the time to have this dialogue, to put all of this together. I know it's not easy and I appreciate your patience working with us and also continued collaboration. For any future questions that anybody has, and then the deadline, the deadline is?
September 14th for written comments.
To continue working diligently to try and answer any questions that we have between now and then. Thank you very much in the public and thank you ACBD both down this evening. I very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
That was a good comment.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight and providing your comments. It is appreciated and very important. With that, this public hearing is adjourned.